The City Council is not able to hear any comments at this time on land use matters that are or before, or may come before, City Council. Please reserve such comments for the appropriate public hearing. All right. Ron? Three minutes. State your name and address for the record, please.
Ron Bruce, 15800 East 121st Avenue.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
As a member of North Range Concerned Citizens, to say our organization was pleased with the results of the election would be an understatement. Our slate of candidates, running on a core mission statement that City Council should make public safety, health, and welfare the priority, took an unofficial first place, a second place, and a third place. In fact, our candidate for the at-large position, Lucy Molina, only lost to Mr. Hurst by 1.4%, which in my mind makes her a shoe-in elected candidate for the upcoming open position at at-large. More importantly, to me, the numbers show that we are not a small, marginalized faction of malcontents who just complained to the City Council, which is how a number of Council members have categorized us. The numbers confirmed we are the face and voice of thousands of voting citizens who, like us, want a better Commerce City. We look forward to presenting our views and concerns to the new City Council, starting on December 2nd. But this time around, we will not be ignored. We will not be dismissed by a city staff who selectively edits public feedback to fit their own narrative. If necessary, we will mobilize our very successful campaign of social media, door-to-door contact, and informational banner displays to alert our core constituents about actions we consider detrimental to Commerce City's success. Thank you.
Thank you. Vicki Kettler, please.
I'm Vicki Kettler, 15722 East 107th Avenue, Commerce City. I've been before this council, along with my husband, many times in the past two years. If you were listening, you already know my story. We are upset that you continue to ignore or respect our comments and concerns. I speak for my family and for the vast majority of my neighbors. We are concerned about the health and safety of all citizens who live here, breathe here, work here, raise families here. It is alarming to recognize Commerce City has accepted the eight applications of proposed industrialized oil and gas development in our densely populated area, being the largest request in the state of Colorado. You must consider that your decisions will require you to rezone our habitable, living neighborhoods to unhealthy, toxic, oil and gas-producing communities where only the less socially economic can afford to live. Commerce City is giving more interest in the business stakeholders and cares little about the citizens affected. We ask you to make more intelligent business management decisions. There are political and economic equations involved. Make the best decisions for all of the citizens of Commerce City without causing permanent harmful effects on established communities, our wildlife, and environment. Commerce City has been falsely persuaded to push for big-business productions, pushing into neighborhoods, schools, and parks by turning a blind eye to any new laws and regulations to protect its citizens. We should not have to seek legal counsel to protect our homes and families. Please listen to all of the citizens affected. We voted you in here not to become an elite City Council. Stop isolating candidates and council members that the people have voted into office just because they prioritize our personal public health and safety. You are silencing a large population who have voted these candidates in. Averse by the Kingston Trio, what nature doesn't do to us will be done by our fellow man. This environmental and social injustice must stop. Please respect the spirit of the law and protect us citizens. People must come before profits. Thank you.
Thank you. Ronnie Sanchez. Ronnie?
Rhana Sanchez, 10680 Waco Street. Good evening. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. First, I'd like to congratulate Mr. Huesman and Mr. Hurst on being elected to the council. To Mr. Douglas and Mr. Davis, I appreciate all you've done to serve the residents, and I applaud your efforts to continue to do so. I mean that sincerely. Now, I have a few items I would like to address. First, I recommend that you select Lucy Molina to replace Ben Huesman as a council person at large. As council members, you work for the residents, and you are elected by the residents. Lucy received the third highest number of votes for this position, which clearly shows she is supported by a large number of residents who voted. She also represents an area of Commerce City that is underrepresented on the council. It only makes sense that she be appointed. Second, I always tell my grandchildren to choose kind, and I'm trying my very best to follow that advice. So this is the third iteration of my comments to you. As you know, I'm very passionate about this. I'm worried about the impact on health and safety of everyone in this community with regards to oil and gas. As a leukemia survivor, I worry about my health, and I worry about your health and your families as well. I saw all the campaign literature that you handed out when you guys were running, and I saw pictures of your beautiful daughter, Mr. Huesman, and I also saw pictures of your children as well, Mr. Hurst. And I'm a...I love children, and those really got my attention. And I worry that...I worry about your kids as well as the kids around our neighborhood. I worry that you haven't looked at the cumulative impacts of so many wells in such a concentrated area. There are not rules and regulations for oil and gas in Commerce City except for the loophole-ridden ROA with extraction, and this makes me very sad. I'm also confused as to why you waited so long to let us know about the additional five permit applications extraction submitted. You shared with us the two, but then you waited till after the election to publicize the five, and I don't quite understand why. Again, I implore you to look at the health and safety of your residents and your own families. If the residents and your families are as important to you as you continue to state, and I personally believe that they are, you will do the right thing to protect all of us. You have that power. Thank you.
Thank you. Sean Quavo.
Sean Quavo, Villages of Buffalo, Rupp. First off, I'd also like to say congrats to those of you who won your elections. It's a...it's no easy feat, and for those of you who are moving on, thank you for your service. I know that we don't always see eye to eye, but you do provide a service that is a sacrifice to you, so I do appreciate the work that you do, even if we don't agree on everything. I also want to echo the idea that Lucy Molina should be appointed to this council. We are lucky enough to have the results of an election to help us guide that. This is the closest we could get to another election to figure out who's appointed to this position. And I think that would be the...a way to get someone on the council that is chosen by the public. The other thing I want to talk about, of course, is oil and gas. And I heard that you are all beginning to codify regulations around oil and gas, but that seems to have taken...it's not completed yet. I don't know if it's on hold, or if it's something that will be coming soon, but I also know that applications are still in process with extraction. And I see that as a conflict of being able to regulate effectively. If you're being pressured to put these applications through, wouldn't that affect what you are going to...how you would regulate? Couldn't you be boxing yourself into a corner by working with these operators while also trying to figure out what the regulations could be at the same time? I urge you to try to take your time with regulating these things. This codification is going to affect our city for a long time, and it deserves that kind of attention. And also, I hope you take into account cumulative impact, take into account that if we build all of these, or if we allow all of these sites to be built in our city, that all of them together will affect us more than just any one individual one. And also, take into account the solvency of these operators. Extraction's stock price continues to plummet. The last time I was here, I think it was around $3 or $4, and now it's around $1.78. It continues to underperform, and that could put us in a very bad position if we allow them to operate here. So I urge you, codify these things. Don't just have a regional operators agreement. Have regulations that will give us the power we need to protect ourselves, to put our health and safety first. You have the ability to do so, and I urge you to do so. Thank you so much, and have a good night.
Thank you. Susan Noble.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm Susan Noble, 10642 Uleath Street. First, I'd like to thank Mayor Ford, Mayor Protem Teeter, and Councilmember Douglas for your service, and all of you as well. Congratulations to those of you who won your elections. On October 21st, I came before this council to talk about two pads, the permit applications that had been submitted for two pads, for Condor and Pelican, on the evening of the monthly oil and gas update. I'd like to review those again. That was Pelican, 28 wells submitted on October 8th to frac under Reunion South Lawn, East Point Buckley Ranch, Frontera Village in South...in Ward 4. Condor, 16 wells submitted October 8th to frac under Buffalo Highlands to Arsenal from E470 in Ward 4. These were both on the October 21st oil and gas update. The oil and gas update also stated, "Staff anticipates additional permits to be submitted in the next few weeks." As it turned out, Owl, 18 wells, submitted October 17th to frac under Buffalo Run from E470 to Chambers in Ward 4. Falcon, 18 wells, submitted October 17th to frac under Reunion and Buffalo Mesa from E470 to Chambers Road in Ward 4. Blue Jay, 18 wells, submitted October 17th to frac under Properties North to Bar Lake on east side of E470 in Ward 4. Heron, 24 wells, submitted October 18th, 2019, to frac under proposed Affordable Housing Community and Under Wetlands between 104th and 96th from Potomac East to Chambers Road, and that's in Ward 3. And Harlow, 32 wells, submitted October 21st, 2019, to frac under Turnberry Village, Potomac Farms, and North Range Village, also in Ward 3. Again, these were all prior to the monthly oil and gas update on October 21st. As you know, the election was on November 4th. It seems that it would be important going forward to have as much transparency as possible from the City Council and the staff, and to provide as much information as is currently available to the community at all times. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And congratulations to you, by the way. All right, that takes us through our citizen communication portion of the meeting. Brings us to the consent agenda. Consent agenda includes items that are routine, procedural, informational, self-explanatory, and non-controversial. They are presented to council for a single motion and vote. Any member of the council may ask to remove a specific item for further discussion and a separate vote. Tonight, there are four items listed under the consent agenda. Does anyone on this council wish to remove an item off of the consent agenda? Saying none, I'm open for a motion. Mr. Madera.
Move to approve the consent agenda by Councilord.
Councilwoman Frank?
Second that motion.
For a motion and a second, will the city attorney please read the titles of the four items on the consent agenda?
The minutes of November 4, 2019, the minutes of November 11, 2019, ordinance 2244, an ordinance consolidating the Future Growth Fund and transferring the remaining balance into the Capital Improvements and Preservation Plan Fund, CIPP, thereby eliminating the Future Growth Fund. Resolution 2019-120, resolution appointing Kristen N. Brown as the liquor authority and marijuana licensing authority for the city of Commerce City.
Thank you. Last for a roll call vote. For the record, consent agenda is approved by the City Council this evening. Eight yes, one vacant or excused absence. Next item on the agenda is administrative business. I'm going to invite Roger Tinkenberg forward to make the oil and gas presentation.
All of the staff who deal with this are out of town, so I am presenting it, but I will admit that I'm not going to know much detail. If you have questions about detail. So seven oil and gas permits have been submitted and deemed complete, and I'll note, based on citizen comments earlier, there's a period of time where staff review them to determine whether the application is complete or not, and once it's deemed complete, that's when it's reported. So that's why there's a time lag between when it's originally submitted and when it is reported to council. All operators have asked that holds be placed on processing of Form 2As, and that would also involve an additional second comment period for those. These are the pad sites that have been submitted. Harlow, Heron, and then Moving East, Owl, Blue Jay, Falcon, Pelican, and Condor. A note on Condor, I know there are discussions to move that further east, onto the east side of E470. I do not know the status of those discussions. So permits are routed to both internal and external agencies for review, and then they're reviewed over the next six weeks for compliance with both the Land Development Code and the Regional Operator Agreement. Additional local and state regulatory agencies have received a referral of permits and have been asked to comment, and then the development review team discuss each case. So these are the current spacing applications. You'll note that the top five were approved, and the others are pending. In terms of 2A applications, all are on hold except the analog pad, which is pending, and no new forms have been received since the last update. In terms of current 2A applications, again, all are on hold except for the analog pad, and no new 2A applications have been received since the last update. This shows where the...each pad site would be drilling in terms of the access permit, if you will. And then, in terms of the updates to the LDC, council had voted to continue the ordinance indefinitely, and so one of the questions that we have is, when does council want to reactivate that process in terms of working on those land development code updates? And some of the issues being evaluated are the lapse period, the reverse setback, disclosure of proprietary chemicals, clarification on setback definitions, air quality monitoring equipment, and modifications to the BMPs based on comments that were received by the state. I will note, I have personal knowledge of air quality monitoring from the standpoint of visiting with an employee of City and County of Denver, who is in charge of their air monitoring program, and we have set up a meeting to meet with them to get a better understanding of their network that they have. But I know they have ongoing, continuous monitoring, which has basically instantaneous update into their reporting system, so that's of particular interest to us. Council had asked what kind of a timeline is involved with the LDC updates, and so this is the general timeline. It could take more time, depending on type of issues that you would want staff to research and bring information back to you. But typically, you're looking at two to three weeks for stakeholder meetings. Then you'd have a study session with a new council, two weeks to revise draft ordinance, the draft ordinance, based on that feedback, and then three weeks for drafting the ordinance and making it available for public comment and feedback. So those are kind of the shortest timelines. If there's additional questions and additional research that you would want to do, then we would have to take more time than that, but it gives you kind of a thumbnail sketch of what would be involved with updating the LDC code, the land development code. Any questions on that, or any feedback that you want to give at this time, or do you want to give it thought and give feedback at a later time?
Councilwoman Frank? Yeah? Mr. Wadiola?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Roger, when you see the stakeholder meetings, could you guys ask the focus group to come back to that?
The regional focus group?
The oil and gas focus group that we appointed.
Well, we could. Again, whatever council directs.
I just think, because, I mean, I look at all these, and I know there's a chance for public comment, which is great, but I think the focus group should be met with all this other issue, or other people, Oakwood, Tri-County. I'd like to see the focus group come back together, obviously minus the two folks that will be sitting up at the dais, but the rest of the group.
Mr. Huesman?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to caveat on Councilman Wadiola's comments, and I do believe that the most important stakeholder is left off, and that's the residents of Commerce City. So we definitely need to make sure that they have a seat at the table as well whenever these conversations take place.
So they would be part of the outreach that you're...are you talking about on the focus group itself? I'm not sure I followed that.
You're saying here, you're going to have public stakehold...follow-up stakeholder meetings with the following entities that provided comments during the public hearing. Now, where in there does it say we're going to let the residents participate in that? The residents are the most important stakeholder that there is and should be involved in the process. So if you're going to have public meetings with the Home Builders Association of Metro Denver, Oakwood Homes, Tri-County Health, Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment, COGA and the API, extraction oil and gas, then there should also be meetings with the residents, so they have an opportunity to be on the front end to help craft this ordinance, this land development code that is going to impact them.
Let me re-ask my question a different way. So there's the three weeks where the draft ordinance is being made available for comment and feedback, but you're saying to have feedback upfront into...so that goes into the drafting of the ordinance. Are you thinking in terms of...but let me rephrase that. What type of public input were you thinking of? What would meet your view of what we should do?
What is the purpose of having a meeting, a stakeholder meeting, with Oakwood Homes for this process?
Simply be...I think simply because they have an agreement, some type of agreement with extraction oil and gas.
And so this gives them an opportunity to express their concerns on the LDC as it is being drafted?
Yes, as it would affect their development.
So all these stakeholders that are up here get an opportunity to tell you how they want you to draft the land development code, but the residents have to wait until it's already been drafted and then provide comment and hope that we accept those comments into their thing?
I understand that. I guess I'm struggling to figure out what that input process would look like.
Well, what does the input process look like for a Home Builders Association of Metro Denver to come in here and tell you what they want to see in the LDC?
Well, again, each one of those would have a single representative. When we're talking about the citizens, we're talking 50-some-thousands.
Reach out to Mr. Bruce and let the NRCC come in and provide their input, and if that's the way it needs to be done.
Okay.
But it's a foul to me that we allow these stakeholders, yet we don't list our own residents as a stakeholder in this process.
I'm fine with, you know, extending the group of organizations if that meets your criteria. That's what I'm trying to understand, is what do you envision that process involving? So we could certainly, you know, include organizations such as North Range Concerned Citizens. Are there other groups that we should include as well? I just want to make sure we meet your expectations.
I think the focus group that we created and appointed would be acceptable. I mean, those are all residents that live in Commerce City.
Well...
Go ahead, Mr. Madera.
Thank you. I think you also should have an opening, a public discussion at Bison Ridge, like you did before, when these stakeholder meetings were being held and we had...where a public could come see what was our BMPs. So I think in this situation, my hearing, public hearing, you should have a...especially with the public, have them weigh in at Bison Grill, I'm sorry, at the Bison Ridge, and weigh in on this as well, just as we did when we did the oil and gas stakeholder.
So those open house type?
So open house type situation.
Anyone else? Troy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If there's a consensus among council that we would like to use the previously adopted stakeholder group in addition to opening it up, it sounds like to others in the community to participate, I would be happy to add that step to the process. I'm hearing consensus, but I wanted to confirm that with you.
Anybody have a problem with what Troy just said? Mr. Madera? Comment?
Yeah, well, I was just going to reiterate, you know, we should definitely open it up to the focus group, because that is a representation of the city as well as, you know, give the North Range Concerned Citizens a seat at the table as well with, you know, representative. I would rather shy away from the open house, because, well, one, we have two to three weeks to mobilize that, and the other part is, we're getting to the point where everyone's just repeating themselves over and over again, and I think it's more beneficial to have a smaller group that has focused comments specific to the LDC itself, rather than, you know, just getting these broad ideas out there. So I think it's more beneficial to have representatives from each of the stakeholder groups. I definitely think that the residents need some representation as part of this process as well, and they're missing right now, so the focus group... So, the focus group and then the North Range Concerned Citizens should be involved.
Anyone else? Travis?
Yes. You know, when we are looking for participation with the oil and gas and we opened this up, the BMPs and those folks that were involved with that stakeholder, they were there pushing their agenda. And as far as citizens coming out, there are ones who have not had the ability to come here and speak. So, we have this open house, they have shown up to those events. So, it's not asking to recreate their will here. It's, matter of fact, opening up and making this a true transparency to our public. So, there is a public process to this and not just to just a few groups.
Anyone else? Any other questions, Roger, that you need answered?
I'm good, sir.
There's nothing more on the oil and gas presentation?
Thank you. So, we have the process here, knowing that there's these separate applications, and then, you know, we got these monthly updates that said there was anything that was approved. But in between there, after the election, of course, those came in and said those permits were submitted and then are they deemed complete? Because that wasn't put out there November 4th or prior, even though they were between that window of October 15th up until the election.
Well, the ones that were shown previously are the ones that are deemed complete. The ones that are shown as approved on the status?
As of when they were submitted back in October? I mean, between then and now, as far as the city reviewing them or?
These were approved, I want to say, week and a half or two weeks ago, the remaining three of the five.
Right.
But in terms...
This is the state.
This one? So, I'm sorry, what was your question again? Which ones are approved or complete?
Yeah, are deemed complete. This is right here submitted and deemed complete by the city by all extraction. And as far as the process here, when we did the monthly update the last time before, even the night of, at Monday night, none of these, none of these right here were put in as being submitted and deemed complete then, but they were only shown after November 4th. And why was that?
Well, again, there's a period of time between where they're submitted and then when they're deemed complete. So, that would be all I could answer on that, quite honestly. Because once they're deemed complete, then from there they go to the approval process. So, I'm not sure.
Right. But in our, in our update, weekly update, it doesn't show that these were submitted and deemed complete until after the election, before we made, you know, that night we had a decision to make as far as land development code. And then either putting, putting those land development codes that were going to be processed until a later date. And so, it didn't show prior to November at our November 4th meeting that these were received only after. I think that would have had a significant difference in what was voted on that night.
Mr. Douglas, I don't have direct access to that information nor did I control any decision as to how to create these reports, but just referring to the documents that I have available to me from the October 21st update, it did note that two applications have been deemed complete and that staff anticipated that other items were being reviewed. I don't know when that presentation was published or put in the agenda, which may have been before those dates. The city manager update for the week of, I believe it was dated the 24th, indicated that additional permits had been submitted and were undergoing that review. But I do believe that the decision at the staff level was to not identify permits that had been applied for but not deemed complete. At any, until they were deemed complete. But I don't know the specifics beyond that, if that helps to clarify.
It doesn't, it just doesn't seem right to have this after the fact and not have this information beforehand, even though the information was there.
We don't know if the information was there. I would concur with Robert. I don't have that timeline in front of me. But we certainly understand you're insinuating that there was information available that wasn't provided, and I don't know that to be the case.
Okay. So, where are we at in this process then as far as, where's the city staff at with putting everything together? I know we just went over the two weeks and all that, the new council coming in and everything, but exactly where's staff at right now with the regulations as far as what they've?
Well, these updates, again, basically were on hold until the council, new mayor and council gives us direction in terms of how soon you want to take up the process. So, again, you know, with the idea of giving the new council a chance to get seated and settle in, it seems like you would want a little bit of time there before taking up a weighty topic like this. But again, we're at...
No, I appreciate that.
Council's direction on that.
Thank you.
Anything else on oil and gas update? Saying none, we'll move into, back to the administrative council business. Is there any council members that have administrative council business this evening? Mr. Douglas?
Yes, I have something just in council as far as the upcoming transportation infrastructure committee policies. They're going to be reviewed this Wednesday and then voted on on Saturday. If you guys could take a look at that and see anything that you would want to weigh in on, I'll have them till Wednesday to present that.
Thank you. Mr. Hughes?
Thank you, Mayor. Wednesday afternoon at the NLC City Summit, I will be attending the Energy, Environmental, Natural Resources Federal Advocacy Committee for National League of Cities. Earlier, you received a draft resolution. It is also on your dais in hard copy. I have no issue with the verbiage in this resolution concerning increasing federal investment in water infrastructure and would like permission to vote in favor of that on Wednesday afternoon.
Does anybody have a concern or a desire for Mr. Hughesman to carry anything other than a yes vote on the NLC resolution that is before you? I'd like you to go there, Mr. Hughesman. Any other administrative council business? If you have more?
Yeah. I was wondering, I know we talked about this in the past, but what's the likelihood of, in our study session, since we're going to be meeting back there in the back room, I mean, I might not be in council then, but the ability to have any audio or video equipment installed in that room?
There is AV equipment planned for that room if the council decides to make that their permanent, both study session room and workroom. The equipment, though, is primarily targeted for conducting presentations and telephone town halls. If you're inquiring about broadcasting and recording, that equipment is not spec for that room at this time. And the council could certainly provide staff direction to change that at the time we bring forward the design of that room.
Okay. Would this council have any problem with, when they make those changes to include any audio, video for a study session room?
Only, only comment that I would have is, we've got several new members coming onto this council. I think it's up to that new council to determine how they want those members to be on. I would defer to the new council coming on.
Only reason why I asked is when I first came on council, I looked at how our regular meeting and study sessions were being conducted and back then proposed a pilot program to separate the two, and that's the path we've been on since then. And just asking, going forward, it would help for the new council to have this type of equipment and the ability to make things more transparent when our study sessions.
Mr. Madera?
Yeah, I actually had another topic, but I'll weigh in on this one. I think we would need to see the numbers first and what all it would take before I'd be willing to agree either way for this. So, I think it'd be something that should come before the next council and the study session, and then we can make a decision once we got all the information.
Okay. Well, I would ask that one of the members who are staying or the new members coming in would make that request, because I think that really would help this council out in the city. Thank you.
Mr. Hughes?
Thank you. November 6th, I met with Mr. Sheasley, our city attorney, and Mr. McBroom, our city manager, and that was one of my requests that the staff explore the cost and feasibility of adding communication and broadcast equipment to that room. And then, again, that will be a decision of the council going forward. I'll stop there. Thank you.
All right. Back to Madera.
So, earlier today, I received a question about Tower Road and 96. I guess the light cycles there take up to five cycles for cars to get through on Tower Road. And they wanted to know if there was a planned traffic study or if staff could look into that.
Was it for Tower Road turning onto 96 or 96 turning onto Tower?
It was Tower going southbound, just going straight through on 96.
We don't have anything planned, but it's certainly something we'd take a look at.
Thank you.
Are there any other administrative council business this evening? Brings us to reports. Troy, do you have a city manager report?
Mr. Hughesman, were you going to bring up one additional item this evening?
My apologies. Thank you. It was requested by Mr. Smith that we set a firm date for the council orientation. A couple of weeks ago, we had talked about that transitioning from December 6th and 7th to December 13th and 14th. So, we'd like to get that set in stone so that staff can begin to prepare for that event.
So, I'm going to refer to the newly elected members that are serving on this council to identify those dates. I don't think it has an effect on me, Steve, or Rick at this time. So, any of you that would like to weigh in? Mr. Madera?
Yeah, I know for a fact that I'm not going to be available on December 13th. So, that day won't work for me.
Okay. Hurst?
I don't really have an opinion. I think the sooner the better. But the 6th and 7th work for me, the 13th, 14th work for me.
Mr. Wadiola?
13th, 14th work for me.
Does anybody have a problem with the 13th, 14th? Oscar? Hurst?
Can we do, Oscar, I'm just asking you, can we do the new orientation on Friday night and then bring the current sitting council members back Saturday morning? Would that work for you?
Yeah, that would work for me.
I mean, that allows us to do 13th and 14th and bring everybody back. I'm not sure about outside of who's up here, but it sounds like it was better than the 6th and 7th.
Do you have what you need?
If I'm understanding your proposal, Mr. Hurst, it was to have new council members on Friday evening only and to have all the council together on Saturdays?
Yeah, there was a portion in the agenda that we looked at that was just for new council members, which I'll be at as well. If we can move that to the first session on Friday night and then do the full session on Saturday that includes current sitting, I think that would be more effective so we can get everybody there.
Okay.
You know, I feel obligated to have the staff reach out to those who recently were elected that aren't up here able to make this decision and make sure that those dates work for them as well because they will be affected.
We have confirmed the availability of those who have been elected, but what we won't have available for that night is anyone who's appointed.
Any other council business? Saying none. Any other reports for you, Troy?
The city manager report was sent out to you all last week and is available on the web. There is an update related to the two charging stations at the Bison Ridge Recreation Center. This is the second update related to this item. Public Works is still finishing up the installation with parking space delineation, and communications will promote the charging points with printed material and posters and website and social media once it's ready to go.
Thank you. Mr. Sheasley?
Just wanted to note a couple items. As a vacancy occurs, if there are any questions about the process for filling that, available to provide that. And then, we don't anticipate that this will happen, but there is a possibility that due to the nature of our charter that requires the swearing-in to occur on the second Monday following the certification of the election, that the swearing-in would actually have to occur after December 2nd. So, we're monitoring that closely and waiting for the clerk and recorder to certify the results of the election so that we can confirm that date. And with the city manager's office, make sure we have an alternate plan if that's the situation. Thank you.
Thank you. I do have some items that I want to touch on. First and foremost, I want to congratulate all of those who were elected for this upcoming council. I know it's campaigning and dealing with everything that happens during that time of your campaigns. It's not an easy thing. So, congratulations to all the newly elected members of the council. I do want to give a shout out to State House 38. They did have their reception on Saturday. Extremely great restaurant in our community, something that our residents have been desiring for a long time. So, looking forward to seeing how that goes, but my guess is that it's going to be hard to get into for a while. I also want to congratulate La Casa Del Rey on their reopening under some new ownership, same management, but several of us were at that grand opening celebration on Saturday morning as well. And I want to congratulate the South Adams County Fire Department. They had their award ceremony. It was very well handled, and I think they have a great organization and a lot to look forward to in the near future. That'll end my comments. Does anybody have any additional items they'd like to report? Hurst? If there be no further business to come before the city council of Commerce City this evening, we are adjourned. Thank you all for being here.
Thank you all for being here.